I know we're all having fun talking to each other, but the day's getting away from us. I want to, first of all, welcome our Board of County Commissioners from Beaufort County. Thank you for meeting with us today. I look forward to this being an informative, as well as a cooperative and collaborative effort on both parts. I want to call this meeting to order, and the first thing that I want to do is get a motion for approval of an agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? All right, we are in open session, and now I'll turn it over to Chairman Evans.
I call to order the joint meeting between the Beaufort County Commissioners and the Beaufort County School Board.
All right, thank you so much. And then, the very next thing I'm going to do is turn this over to our Board Member, Mr. T.W. Allen. He's going to say the blessing, and then we're going to eat.
Dear Father, thank you for the food that's been prepared for us. Please bless our blessed bodies as we continue to talk and make our school system better, make our decisions at your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And now I'll let Lisa give us directions. There it is. There it is. There it is. As our guest, the Commissioners will please go first, and she can tell you. We're going to go ahead and get started. We've had a lot of visitors come in while y'all were eating, and I want to very quickly, we're going to start with Mr. Singleton. If you will just stand up and say what part of our school system or who you represent, so that we all know who we are. Greg?
Good afternoon, great, since I work for Federal Program Arts Park. Oh, boy. Hello, I'm Seth Smith. I'm the Principal at Eastern Elementary School.
I'm Mark Plankstil. I'm the Principal of Northeast Elementary.
I'm Anthony Bailey. I'm the Assistant Principal with P.S. Jones Middle School.
I'm Kelly Maitland. I'm the Principal of Town Small Elementary School, Board of Fifth Grade.
I'm Rick Anderson, Principal of Southside High School.
Emily Pay, the Principal of the Early College School.
I'm very, really excited for Director of Instructional Services.
Martha Johnson, President of County.
I'm Brad Delmon.
I'm Wes Hayden, Book Observer.
Right there, Book Observer.
I'm Lynn Brine, Director of School Nutrition.
Chair, Lynn, Department of Transportation, Beaufort County Schools.
I want to thank you all for coming. We have a couple of principals that had a lot of principal things going on at their school that may walk in while we're meeting, but I wanted you to introduce yourself because I wanted the Commissioners to know that we have a very devoted, involved group of administrators in our school system and how important they are to us, and every decision both of us make today and in the coming days has a direct effect on them. At this time, I want to turn the meeting over, and if you're still eating or having dessert, please feel free to do so. We're going to turn this over to the ORED presentation, and we have Mr. Matthew Palmer and Mr. Thomas Dudley Esquire. Does he need to come to the podium and get closer?
He's just going to work it. Well, good afternoon, all. Pleasure to be here today. In the spirit of brevity and levity, I wanted to open with a Jeopardy-inspired quick round of trivia questions for you all. You have one of the most beautiful schools in the entire state of North Carolina, the Bath School. Many of you have seen it. So I have three quick questions, and as rewards, three bottles of water here if you get it right. Who knows on what year the Bath School was placed on the National Register of Historic Places?
I can't answer. No idea.
The year was 2008. I'll take that bottle. Who knows the architectural style of the Bath School? Colonial Revival. It's two bottles of water for them. And in what year was the Bath School initially built?
Nineteen twenty-five?
Well, it's a give or take a decade close. The year was nineteen eighteen. So, got lots of water with me today, that's good. So, our group, Operations Research and Education Lab at NC State University through the Institute for Transportation, Research and Education. We like acronyms because that's not short. Mr. Dudley here and myself work together closely to help Boards and County Commissioners look at complicated problems, especially in the times that we're in now where funding, especially for school facilities, is challenging. Operational costs are across-state considerations that everyone is making, and so what we really seek to do is bring data to the conversation so that as you look at decisions, you have information that pairs both what has happened historically from an enrollment perspective with what's likely to happen looking forward, with any developments that may be coming online, and, you know, carrying out those enrollment trends forward. So today, we're going to give you an overview of sort of what we're seeing as initial considerations. What does the trend data suggest? What does the model suggest for your student enrollment? And then we'll begin to look at some possible solutions that address some of the problems that are emergent within. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, my name is Matthew Palmer. I lead the School Planning and Transportation Group at NC State. So my colleague, Mr. Thomas Dudley, Program Manager of the ORED Team, and Ms. Elizabeth Daniel, who is our GIS Analyst back at headquarters. Next slide. So, briefly, I'll just dust over this. We have shared these points before, but it bears repeating and revisiting. Certainly, counties and school districts rely on one another to succeed and grow. Our school districts produce students, graduates, and ultimately the workforce that often occupies a county. However, we have a gap in planning in that because we have two different boards, and we certainly have County Commissioners as well as the Board of Education, there's a spectrum of communication, collaboration, and coordination. We see some instances where that relationship is very close, and others in which our team works to fulfill that gap, to facilitate information across, and that's really what we do and why we're here today. So, again, briefly, the sort of bullet points here, workforce development, recruitment and retention of jobs. Schools play a vital role. We were referencing the Bath School earlier. That's a historic place. In many ways, facilities are the center of communities and a reflection of a community's value in education. They also do impact land values and tax revenue as well. Next slide, please. On the education side, the quality of a building has a direct impact on health, education, and economic outcomes. We see that here in the U.S., forty-six percent of our schools are measured to have poor air quality. We know that air quality is directly correlated back to education outcomes at the school level. And from a job generation perspective, any investment in school construction, you know, billion dollars, seventeen thousand jobs, and we can take that a number of different ways, but it's a direct relationship between the facility condition and some of these key indicators. So again, in a state in which we are not mandated that Boards of Education and County Commissioners work extremely closely together, we try to bridge this divide. And moreover, we're bringing data in a third-party perspective to a complex conversation so that you're all able to make important decisions with information that's collected objectively and what's available publicly. Next slide. So today, we're going to reflect on the historic enrollment information, account for current and future growth, and then compare the existing school facility capacities with that projected enrollment growth moving forward. Next slide. So we'll review the land use study. I'll hand it over to Mr. Dudley to talk about the enrollment forecast, and then that all comes together through what we would sort of call a facility utilization or a capacity analysis table that'll tell you about capacities over a ten-year horizon. And then we'll begin to consider, what are some of the solutions available? We refer to it as optimization, but it's really looking at what might you do with enrollment boundaries and some facility considerations. So, when we talk about the land use study itself, we're looking at both the historical information related back to numbers and raw data, but also importantly, we've gone and met with folks in your community, the planning leaders, the development leaders, those that have intimate information on transportation projects, water and sewer considerations, land assembly. Those are the key factors that are going to influence rooftops and ultimately influence children in the district. Next slide, please. So, apologize for the fine print. This is only to suggest the topics that we've covered in these conversations with your community members. Next slide, please. And these are the developments that we have online right now in the county. You can see, we have a handful in the county itself. The Ellis Cove Road Project over in Bath, we've got fourteen lots that'll be coming online, and then a handful of smaller infill projects, and then several travel trailer parks on Miller Road and Chalkwindy. In the city of Washington itself, we've got North Gate with the buildout of Phase One and the anticipated uptake of Phase Two, as well as Iron Creek, where there's about twenty-five, at the time of interview, there were twenty-five units still available. We did not have additional projects in Aurora, Bath, Bellhaven, Chalkwindy, Pantages, or Washington Park at that time. Next slide, please. Pairing that with the Harbor Revitalization Project, we certainly look at economic development as well with the long-term strategies for bringing folks to the county. Certainly, this waterfront project, the revitalization that you've all seen on the waterfront itself that is ongoing, I think that certainly bears monitoring. It's not directly related to this project, but it's certainly one that we wanted to just sort of earmark and say. It bears noting moving forward on what that might mean for employment generation. Next slide, please. So, just a review of some of the employment statistics at the county level. One of the things that you see certainly on the first line here, the estimated percentage population change between 2010, the census in that year, and the most recent estimate of 2017. At the state level, we have about a five percent growth rate, and the county itself a slight decline at about point four percent. When we look at that concurrent to other considerations, your median household income level, persons in poverty, those are indicators that certainly some of the challenges at the community and county levels are realized also in the school district as well. It would also bear noting that the cost of living is at eighty-six point eight. That's on a hundred-point scale, so effectively, it is more affordable to live in Beaufort, but one of the key driving costs of that, cost of living overall, has to do with the cost of housing. You're all very aware, I'm sure, of, Beaufort is certainly a destination for retirees, and there are many higher price-pointed communities in and throughout the county. And that may not necessarily be student-generating, but it is influencing the cost of housing. So that would be one thing to be aware of, certainly, I'm sure the County Commissioners are and with the Board of Education as well, is not only what's the aggregate number of housing units that are being built, but of those that are being built, are they age-targeted and/or are they student-generating? Next slide, please. So, from an employment perspective, we have, the county school district is the larger, largest employer in the county, and then from there, we have a number of firms between two-hundred-and-fifty and five-hundred jobs. Next slide, please. From a transportation project perspective, there's two main ones that we wanted to notate. Next slide, please. Certainly, the expansion of 264 Eastern West that'll promote connectivity to Greenville and Pitt County to the west, as well as I-95 and I-40. So that's going to improve your overall goods and employee mobility rates, as well as the work that's being done on US-17 north and south, providing connectivity both to Virginia and down to Carteret County and Moorhead City to the south. So overall, we're looking at increased mobility, but again, these are projects that are a few years out from completion and ultimately will be influencing what you're likely to see beyond the scope of this initial population estimation. So, in the interest of time, we'll just go ahead and flip through these. I want to hand it over to Mr. Dudley, who'll be talking about the enrollment forecast and what we see moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Before looking at creating a ten-year enrollment forecast, there were two important demographic factors that we took into consideration in addition to the information that Mr. Palmer has outlined. The two are resident live births and then also your trends in membership, so, and I'll briefly address both of these before bringing up the ten-year enrollment forecast at the school level. Starting with resident live births, which are a key component to any long-range demographic forecast, we see over the past six years, and this is the most recent data, that there have been no real discernible trend in resident live births over this time period. Going back to 2009, which is not on this graph, the resident live birth count was over six-hundred, so there has been a slight decline over the years, and we expect the decline to continue at a very slight rate. And, let's see, in addition to resident live births, looking at your membership history, there's been a decline over the past six years of roughly one-hundred students per year, and that is something that has been fed into part of our forecasting mechanisms as we move forward. This is very common in rural parts of North Carolina during this duration. I always get the question about, well, what percentage of that is charter-related? Of that drop of six-hundred students, about one-hundred-and-thirty were attributable to the charter school that's within the district. Here you'll see the ten-year forecast moving forward. You'll notice that there is a decline. Starting five, six years ago, the school district was at a total membership or enrollment of around seven thousand students, and we expect to see a continued decline in the enrollment of the school district over the next ten years to around a total of five thousand five-hundred at the end of ten years. We also are capable of breaking that down at the school level, so I'll work from left to right here describing what we call our utilization table, sometimes our out-of-capacity table. The school name is the far left, and then we look at the capacity of the school as provided to us by the school district. The first column with the coloring is the current membership, so that's reported to us by NCDPI. And then, working to the right from there, we have for each year and the next ten years, our forecast for the number of students that would be at those schools. The coloring for orange and red would indicate a school that's over its stated capacity. You see, there's only one school there that includes that coloring, green or yellow, or the schools are pretty much right at their capacity. And then, the dark green either means moderately underutilized or too severely underutilized. So, you'll see if you have a copy in front of you, the, for example, Snowden, which is the bottom school in the elementary block, has a current enrollment of around a hundred-and-sixty students at a four-hundred-and-something-capacity facility. The totals are also provided on here, so you can see the total, for example, high school membership versus capacity, so you can tell that currently, the high schools are roughly at fifty-eight percent utilization, which goes down to nearly fifty percent utilization at the end of the forecast. So that's for each student in the district, there would be an additional empty seat at the high school level at the end of ten years. Taking a step back, I'd like to talk about an additional deliverable from us and how we contribute to this process. You've seen the results of the land use study, you've seen the utilization table, but we're also capable of doing comprehensive utilization, or, excuse me, comprehensive optimization either for new school sites or attendance boundaries, and what we're able to explore in some instances is situations like, if a school were to be closed or repurposed, how do you dissolve that school's attendance boundary into neighboring schools? A typical example would be if you take a school offline, maybe three or four other schools would need to be in that impact region to be able to absorb those students. And using similar methods, we're able to sort of examine alternative building configurations. That naturally brings itself into the conversation about student assignment, student reassignment, redistricting, and I just wanted, we wanted to just outline some of the concerns that you as the Boards, you as, you know, parents, other members of the community would have as part of reassignment. Everyone seems to have their own way of weighting these priorities, and it's something that the Boards would need to consider, how multifaceted and multi-faced student reassignment can truly be in their many complexities to student reassignment. For context first, I want to show your existing boundaries. So, talking about the symbology here first, you have the solid background colors are the elementary schools or K-eights as well. The very thin, as you're seeing it now, yellow lines are the middle school or K-eight boundaries as well. The three schools that are to the right are the K-eights. That's one sort of easy way to keep track of that. The red line that goes up the river and then also north in between Washington and everything to the northeast, that's your high school boundary in between those three high schools. Let's see. So as we looked at things geospatially here, there were three options that really jumped out to us, and let me start with the first one here. So this is looking at Snowden, which we mentioned briefly at the utilization table with roughly, I believe, a hundred-and-sixty students currently, and forecasted to lose a significant number of students in the future. As it's drawn here, instead of impacting multiple schools, simply the Chalkwindy schools would absorb the entire attendance zone. To, let's see, with that change, the Chalkwindy schools, of course, well, to take a step back, of course known as a K-eight, so we're talking about part of that population going to the primary school and part of it going to the middle school. Between those two schools, there would be, after that, roughly seventy seats to spare, so there would be some wiggle room there. The other side of the coin, of course, is increased travel distance, that would be impacted as part of this reassignment. Sort of, for additional context, the distance in between those schools is roughly twenty The next thing that we'd be looking at here is the high school level, and this would be the closure of Northside High School, where the entire attendance zone could be shifted into Washington High School. That would be a reassignment of four hundred students, and as we're looking at this, that would leave roughly fifty seats to spare at Washington. Again, these capacities have been provided to us by the school district. One item to note about this scenario is you would have one high school north of the river and one high school south of the river, which does work out. The distance in between these two high schools is roughly sixteen miles, for additional context there. And the last scenario that we have to show, we're calling Scenario C, which again is looking at the high school level where you are experiencing the most severe underutilization. This would be the closure or repurposing of Southside High School and having its entire attendance zone be absorbed by Washington. There would be an additional roughly ten-mile commute added on to the travel times of students that would be coming from that southeast corner. One more important note about this scenario is we would shy away from this one compared with the previous scenario due to some of the information that we accrued as part of the land use study, because there is the potential for longer-term residential and other development to spill over from Pitt County within the current Southside attendance zone. So that may be an important consideration for you to keep in mind. With that, we're here to answer any questions that we can about the study or inform any discussion that would take place between the Boards. Thank you very much.
I have a question about one of your plans. Didn't you have up there that Chalkwindy Primary was at a hundred-and-five percent or greater? That was the one school that was blocked to be at capacity, and yet you think you can put the Snowden kids there? How would you do that when it's at capacity?
I unfortunately don't have that table in front of me.
Wasn't that the one?
It wasn't just that. I'll let you have your question first.
Well, I just, mathematically, I'd see how you could move a hundred-and-some students there when you, on the other slide, had them above capacity.
Just give me just a second here. So I'm seeing on this that the current school that's at capacity would be Taylor, and then also Bath is close. Chalkwindy has about a hundred-and-fifty seats available currently, and that's forecasted to increase by roughly twenty. And then the middle school, roughly seventy-five seats available.
Yeah, I know the middle school has room. Go ahead.
When you say that you received these numbers from the school district as far as capacity, exactly what does that mean? I know what that means. I know what that sounds like it means, but I have numbers also, and I was looking at the HITE study that we've done not that long ago, and I have DPI numbers. I'll just throw at Washington High School. Washington High School currently shows about nine-hundred-and-eighty-one, and the HITE study, back when it came out, said it was eight-hundred-and-eighty-two, and DPI's capacity's nine-hundred-and-eighty. And, but more importantly, I've walked the school, and I know that the school classrooms are full. Are we talking, using all those modular units that we can't use at some of these schools that are, like the CPS number? Does it include capacity numbers that would include this modular units that some of them are basically condemned, staying? Because you're showing a capacity for Washington High School, thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-six, four-hundred more, almost four-hundred more than DPI says. So where, I'm just saying, where did we get that number from? Because I can't see things, I know this is just for thought-provoking anyway, but that sure provoked my thought.
Does it include modular units in the number that they have?
Filling all the modulators?
Including the ones that are all falling down at CPS? But then that puts a flaw in this report right from the beginning.
Yeah.
I thought it was getting away from all of them.
You're going to get away from those because they're going to pretty soon be fell on the ground. Right, you'd be picking them up.
I was very curious as to how Washington High School was eighty percent, or less than eighty percent at capacity, and we got, it got students in trailers. That was kind of confusing to me. capacity, and we got, it got students in trailers, that was kind of confusing to me.
Yep.
And other schools too.
Well, the other number that, really, I just can't wrap anything around it at all, but maybe my chairperson or superintendent can help me. Eastern Elementary, what are we showing? I'm showing that we project next year 780 kids at that school. And that's about, I mean, we're about up that numbers now, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, this report shows a forecast for next year, the 1920 school year, 450. So where does somebody think the 330 students are gonna go from, from between now and next year?
We'll lose a few, but I don't think we're gonna lose that many.
No, that'd be 40% of your population, Eastern's not gonna lose 330 students this year.
No, just based on who you have there this year, as kindergarteners, the train of thought is, I would think, Mr. Smith, you could jump in and correct me, wouldn't you say that at least 90% of your kindergarteners remain with you, and go on into your first grade classrooms, next year?
That, if not more.
If not more, right, that's what I was thinking. The bulk of your kindergarteners do not leave you, they stay and go on into first grade, so to me, that would put your numbers out of whack right there.
I'll just let it go.
Does that not, does that number not include pre-K? How many pre-K you got, Mr. Smith?
He asked, I was yeah.
Okay, so no, that's not, that's not the whole set number.
No, and your pre-K stay with you and go on into kindergarten.
We can take this thought up another day. I just wanted to point out while, because I don't have an audience with the commissioners that much, I just wanted them to understand that I understand, that we're not gonna go from 780 students at Eastern to 450 next year.
Does anybody else have any questions? I know this is just a study, and we all look at numbers differently. Yes, yes, sir.
I have some statements, I mean, you know, this study is a great study, it has a good idea, and we need to continue the exercise, but already, you know, I was surprised too with some of the stuff, but I think probably, we need to have a reexamination of the study, to make sure that the guys that are doing the study have the right information.
I agree with you.
I agree with the source of information, and that's a part of it. Certainly, we want to get rid of modulars. I, as a commissioner, realize that the older capacity of the school, I'm not willing to let one down and build another building. We've got plenty of buildings, the question is how to use them. But I, as the school board, I guess this is a joint effort of both commissioners and the school board, I think the commissioner tried to pay him what, so maybe we should be wanting to say, we need you to just go back and rigorously reexamine and assess the information that you have, because I think when you do some of your conclusions, you start wanna, uh, change. The other thing that I want to say is this, I'm opposed to busing kids hours after hours, kids getting up at 6:30 in the morning to go in school. I realize that may be a little expensive, but I also realize as they get older, we may jam them together as they get older and more mature. Whatever we do, we need to have a system of more global schools, because the consolidated school system in the era of smartphones and narcotics does not work.
Yes, sir.
A few quick points. This is a wonderful opportunity for our group to work closely with both the county commissioners and the school board. That's unique, typically we work exclusively with the school board, and occasionally we will do a joint presentation. So this, bringing it together already, the nature of this project is unique in its structure, and that's an opportunity. Let me also add that our work ultimately is much more process-focused than it is necessarily a few scenarios that we've been asked to put together to present this afternoon. And so what I'm saying, that whether we need to adjust capacities from brick and mortar, taking out local units, things like that, that is part of this process. Those are board policies that would influence what you're seeing in that table. And so, we would encourage that today is the beginning of a conversation, on how this can form the decisions that ultimately, you all collectively need to make. And so, from that perspective, I would encourage, and this is a starting point, the enrollment forecast and those components are the main thrust of our efforts here today. The numbers that we're looking at are the horizon line, do not factor in pre-K, do not factor in the considerations you may have. We certainly stand by our work in that respect. Again, if there are variations in capacity at the school level, we can modify that as we need. But most importantly, this is hopefully the beginning of a working relationship and a partnership, only finding answers to our problems. So, you know, if we need to reevaluate anything, or have further conversations, we're here for that.
Thank you, and I think we do, I think we all. Our goal has been to get as many students out of those modular units. I understand if you took them into consideration as, as square footage that can house students, but we're in the business of removing them, as they were once called, learning cottages. They, some of them are really not, I wouldn't even put my favorite dog in them as a doghouse, because they, they either leak, or you can see the wind blowing through, I mean, they're not, and they're not used. I think half of the Chacoody, they're not used for anything other than storage, right? And they become unsafe for students, as well as, I talked with someone earlier, who had a lot of concerns about, from a fire safety standpoint, some of these modulators, that they would go up faster than a typical mobile home. And I don't want to put any student in something that's, that's like that. Yes, sir?
Just one more thing, did you have the height study? Was the height study made available? That was a $40,000 study that we paid for. You didn't have the benefit of that?
I was not aware of that report, no.
I can't believe that, who on staff is coordinating with you?
On, school staff?
Yes.
During the transition with the previous superintendent, there were, you know, there was not much coordination.
That sounds like it. That's an important item.
One consideration as well regarding transportation impacts. Not only does Ittery house the urban, we also house the tenants. So when we talk about transportation, for those, certainly for the county commissioners, that's the state's standardized routing platform for school buses. So if you're looking at reassignment, if you're looking at any modifications on boundaries, things like that, we can give you a good sense of what that's gonna do through a ride time perspective. So, you know, the considerations you have should be comprehensive and thoughtful, we're here to help through that. And I, to your point, Commissioner Richardson, again, you know, if there's more information that we need to have a look at, certainly.
Sure he is?
Yes, yes.
Just a quick question, the APM numbers, according to DPI, they are generated through the schools, back to DPI, as I understand it. So those numbers ought to be pretty close. I know that's month two, according to what y'all have, but that's the second month of the full school year, where you take a snapshot. I think what I heard was, there's been an increase of 200 students from month two, at elementary school to 700, so that, there's somewhere in here, these numbers ought to be really tight, I would think, right? And it's not what it sounds like to me. I'm just asking a question.
I'm not familiar with, you know, another, well, certainly, this is not corporate apartments, not corporate pre-K students, maybe that helps, when some of the, describing what's going on, that we compare, and you know how it's going to be this year. But there is also the, I'm not aware of a situation where an elementary school of that size has increased by 200 or 300 students.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that, to me, should, I'm not sure, there ought to be a number where everybody can agree on, because the school generates that number going back to DPI, everybody says, yep, at this time, this was the fashion. I know that it goes up, sometimes it goes down as the school year goes on, but there ought to be some, because I'm saying, there's a lot of pre-K, I see some of that. Right, right, and I see, I can see, I don't even know if you're pre-K.
Well, we have pre-K at, we have pre-K at Eastern, we have pre-K at Northeast, we have pre-K at Snowden, we have pre-K at Chacoody Primary, so if not, I mean, I don't, I couldn't tell you what that total number of students is. I know Eastern certainly has the largest number of pre-K students, you said, Seth, about 100?
90 to 100.
90 to 100. And I don't foresee any of those numbers going down, right, Mr. Singleton, as far as?
No, at the current district plan, currently, at four-year-olds across the four schools, 100 days slots available for pre-student students. This does not affect the fact of, I'm talking about pre-students across the district, there are students with disabilities that we inherited from the four-year-olds.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
I've heard of some small classes down at Snowden, do you have a breakdown on class items?
We have the overall school involvement. So we have individual cohort.
No, that's not information that we, I mean, we have the individual cohorts, but not specific classes.
So you're talking classes like graduation class?
Say, say the sixth grade, and they've got seven students.
Okay, yes, we do.
That would be the cohort.
We do, we do model that, and how a specific cohort like that would move forward in the system. Yes, we do have that, for each school.
We do have class groups, we do have classes and cohorts, so we can tell you how many students by that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
May I ask for a quick, since we're all here, it seems very critical, there's a particular school with its discrepancy, and we need to find out what that is. Can we make sure, and earmark that school today, and we, as a team, follow up with you all, and I think we coordinate with Dr. Cheeseman, just to make sure that if there's something that we need to know that's not in here, let's find out what it is, and bring you that answer.
Right, without, without the actual numbers, the study becomes irrelevant to a certain extent, because we're not dealing with actual numbers. So I think everybody would like to know what the actual numbers are. And, and I, I don't see them lining up at this moment, but I think we certainly can get them to line up with what you have.
Sure, so, so the two numbers that are critical there are going to be the capacities that you're asking, and that's a revisitation, I think.
Right, because we need, we need to, especially the modulators that are sitting at CPS, if you've included them as part of your capacity, there are no students in those, nor would we put any students in those.
That would be one, and then two again.
I think, and Eastern's forecast, and I don't think, and I know Mr. Swenson is not here, but somebody that may be more familiar with Washington High School, I don't think they're using all their modulators anymore either, just one, yes, because they also are in, not the best of prepares.
I think when we're considering capacity, we need to consider capacity of the building itself, no modulars. We shouldn't have modulars on our sites. I mean, point blank, we should have students in secure, substantial structures. So I mean, I don't think we should include the modulators in any of our numbers.
Agreed, so I mean, I might suggest that if you've included modulators at any of the schools within the district, you need to go back and reevaluate each one of those schools for capacity, as well as, go back to each school, don't single out Eastern or, or Washington, but go back and get a, this is our head count today scenario, is what I would suggest. Because I'm not, I don't understand the figures either, they don't, you're not gonna lose 300 students from one year to the next.
So, so both of those points would ultimately be, you did, every school is.
That's correct, I guess.
Right, we need to, and that was provided to both boards at some point when it was done, it's been a few years, but, but it was a good study. And also, I'm not sure, when you're doing this study, are you taking into consideration when it is an EC classroom? Because an EC classroom may have the capacity to hold 30 students, but you do not put 30, right? Losses, right, right. They, they have a different square footage, they could be in wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs from kindergarten on up through the high school level, it's a very limited number of children that can be in that room, so I don't know if you take that into consideration, but if that is an EC classroom, you don't count that as a capacity of 30 students. Does that make sense?
And that would pull back about the study as well as the just regular capacity.
And I'm, I'm almost positive, every school has an EC classroom or more, right? One or more? Okay. So those are things that I think we need to revisit, and make sure we're, we're clear on that. Mr. Evans, do you, does your board have any other questions?
No.
Do we have any other questions?
Carolyn, I'd just like to say one thing, I've been around a while, a while, maybe too long, but anyway, we've done a lot of studies. And I can remember one study years ago, we were trying to reconfigure the schools here in Washington, to meet the needs of the students. And one, one study came about, about busing students across the river. We got a beautiful river, I won't agree with everybody about that, but it's a very sensitive location, too. You got adults that do not want to travel from one side of the river to the other to do business. So, you might want to keep that in the back of your mind, too, about how sensitive of busing children from the north side, or from the south side, back and forth. That could be very sensitive.
Well, and to that point, all of our work on any possible solutions to balancing utilization will be derived from direction from the board, from the superintendent. So, we're here to help you think through solutions, and to suggest that this is the only solution.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And for our principals and assistant principals that are here with us today, if you saw a number up there that didn't, didn't add up in your mind, you, you know more than anybody day to day, how many students are at your school, and how things should or should not be counted, based on how you're using your classrooms. Please, you know, please make sure you touch base with us, with Mr. Cheeseman, or, or Mr. Dunn, to make sure, and I'm sure this, a copy of this will be provided on the website when the, when the meeting is aired, so you may want to go back and look, look at that, all right? Okay, thank you so much. Go ahead, go ahead.
One other thing, you know, you mentioned, when you were talking through your study, you, you're talking about the possible repurpose or closure of Northside and Southside High Schools, and you mentioned, well, the two schools are only 16 miles apart, or the two schools are only 20 miles apart, but you've already, you've got to realize that at Southside, there's students coming from Jarvis Landing, which I know you don't know where that's at, but from Jarvis Landing to Washington High School's gonna be an hour and a half, or better, riding on a bus, and then from Highway 99, up the county line, or Highway 264, at that High County line, is also gonna be an hour and a half ride to Washington High School. So, you know, I, I can't understand, and I also agree with Mr. Richardson, I, I don't see how you can even consider closing out other two high schools. Because of busing, and then again, for just making mega schools, I don't, I don't want to see that in Murray County.
And ultimately, we want to ensure that is, you all are making those considerations and working as a part of it, understand what would be the trajectory, what would be the capacity utilization integration, and so we're here in that respect, to carry forward the concepts that you might be looking for. Happy to be here today to begin this conversation, certainly there are some follow-up points, and we will follow.
And we thank you so much. All right, now, yes, yes. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, this is Mr. Matthew Cheeseman, I hope you've all had an opportunity to meet him, our new superintendent, I was remiss by not introducing him at the beginning of the meeting, but I think you've all met, turn the number you.
Good afternoon, it's very nice to meet all of you, and thank you for your time today. And first and foremost, let me just say how excited I am to be the superintendent for Dofa County Schools, and look forward to this partnership with the Dofa County Board of Education, and also the Dofa County Commissioners, as that's truly what it is, it's a partnership. So, with it, I just want to pause for a moment before I show you anything here, and help us understand really what the partnership looks like, at least under my leadership as a superintendent, and that is to have that type of open and honest dialogue, where typically, as my teammates around the room, understand that I speak in truth, and nothing but the truth. And so, considering sometimes, we have a hard time looking at that, and I recognize that both boards have to make very strong decisions, very tough decisions, some of those may not be favorable in the future, some of those may be favorable right now. But in short, when you leave today, I look forward to the opportunity of establishing a joint education steering committee, where the county commissioners, some of you, and some of the board members and myself can meet maybe on a quarterly basis. So you do have a grander idea of what's happening during the course of the year. So with that, just as I get started to this, I do want to provide an update about the Golden Leaf Foundation grant, as many people in the community are concerned that I made a recommendation to pause it, and specifically, I paused it being the new guy, as I had many more questions to the table than may have really been asked initially. So I'm delighted to say that Golden Leaf did pause it for us. By tomorrow afternoon, close of business, we will be submitting additional information to them that Golden Leaf seems to be very excited about right now. So I'm very encouraged that we will still be able to move forward with our Golden Leaf grant, and some of those revisions certainly will enhance our school campuses and also at the same time not threaten the integrity of what the original grant was written for, and that is to better our students and also provide those skill sets our business partners are definitely looking at. So ultimately, all of us with that Golden Leaf grant right now are planning with the end in mind, so we'll keep you updated. We're very excited about it. So in short, as your superintendent, I just need you to understand that I'm originally from New Jersey, so don't hold that against me. Spent time in West Virginia, I'm also from California, Illinois, and about 10 years here in the state of North Carolina. And the reason I tell you that is in my 25 years of education, there's not a lot of guesswork to it, and so I've seen a lot of different things. I'm going to ask you to consider a lot of different things, both the Board of Education and our county commissioners, because what you may be looking through is the lens of local, but I'm looking through the lens of global and that matters. So with that, the introductions, I think all of you know each other, and now you know me, but as all of my constituents and partners in education, which we are, value, we really look at 100% and what that means. And so as we have these conversations and as you have fiscal dialogue with each other, and of course, as a county commissioner, you're responsible for a local portion of the budget and we really appreciate your consideration to that. But, you know, this last study showed you some type of value of 6,352. I can show you the documentation directly from DPI that says 6,501, and I'm just going to ask you, if you believe in less than 100%, which children do you believe we should not educate? And that's really what it boils down to, is one-third of the actual group that needs to be in the room is in the room, the rest are our state legislators and the rest of our federal government people, and that's where we get an awful lot of our funding. But when I'm having these conversations, I'm talking about 100% of our students and 100% of our teachers. And so this is a picture I love to show people, specifically understanding of what we deal with as a board of education, as a school system, what our teachers go through, our school bus drivers go through, and just recognize the fact that you're going to make a decision ultimately about school finance that above the waterline on this iceberg, this is the climate. This is what people see, this is what they feel, this is how it tastes, this is how they chew on it, but they see very little in retrospect to the entire iceberg, which is the culture of the school system. So an awful lot of what goes on is that culture of the school system, what is below the waterline, and I think all of us understand here that the iceberg in the water moves because of the culture, not because of what people say, not because of what people see, not because of how they feel, it's truly the culture of what's under that water. And so when you talk about school finance and you're coming to a conclusion of specifically what type of money that we need and what you can actually possibly fund, just think through about how different that is of your own personal finances. And I say that to you because Willie Mack and Tammy Lewis and the others on our team who do an immaculate job with our school finance, they actually have 19-digit budget codes, where for me, I swear at my Bank of America card personally, and I just see the money come in or come out, but at the same time, school finance is way different because there are requirements by state, by federal government in terms of how we utilize our funding on those budget lines. So please, share this moment with me about my iceberg, because you're directly involved in this iceberg, and I'll be honest with you, in your decision-making, I'd like you to be a part of the culture of this iceberg to help us move the school system. So a lot of people often ask us, yeah, really, what's the purpose of school from the business aspect? And I need everyone in the room to understand that as a 14-year veteran, 14-year veteran of chemistry and forensic science, teaching that subject in classrooms from Pennsylvania to California to North Carolina, I can tell you, the education happens inside the classroom with teachers and students, TAs and students. Everything around that is the business of education, and that's what has brought us to the table today, is that business of education. So in short, I do receive a lot of questions from the community of, really, what's the purpose of the Board of Education? What's the purpose of what we do? And our core business is teaching and learning. So your decision-making around how you fund us will then lead back to the decision-making of what's most important around the business of education. And you may have heard that before, and if so, it's good to repeat it, and if it's new to you, you can use it again in your dialogue. But here's the exciting part about Beaufort County Schools, and last school year, you know, you had 12 eligible schools that could actually be recorded by DPI in terms of school grades, school growth, all that good stuff. And really, as a county, do you know where your schools stand? And even more so, do you know the value of having that knowledge? Meaning, especially around that Golden Leaf grant, when we talk to our business community, when we talk to members trying to come into the community, where are they going to relocate? This information matters. So from the state of North Carolina, from a business model standpoint, sure, letter grades and growth and proficiency, you know, as a parent, I want my child to have an amazing education, I want my child to be loved by their teachers, love her up, teacher socially, emotionally, but at the end of the day, when it comes down to business with North Carolina, it's how well did you move student growth? And ultimately, what's your grade? Because that's what matters. And if you don't think that's true, next time you buy a car, check the grade on the airbag of the car that you're about to buy. You know your eyes go towards it. Next time you drive through McDonald's, look at their health inspection. Have you ever bought something that said a B or did you drive a red? You all look at As on health reports in the restaurants, and that happens too in our school system. So last year, you had two schools exceed growth, but four did not. So my question to you is what lens are you looking through? Are you looking through that two actually exceeded, six actually met, or does four stand out in your mind? What does it matter to you specifically before you make a fiscal decision? Because eight of our schools met growth. Now, as superintendent of a former school system where 100% of my schools met growth, I can tell you, it opens up the door to volumes of opportunities for people to come to, want to be a part of you and be with you. And so my goal is to make sure that our schools meet growth every year. But in terms of those letter grades, those school performance grades, specifically, how many of you are okay if your school has a D and you have a child in our school? Does it matter to you? It does matter to us when we seek federal funding, local funding, state funding. It matters to us with business partnerships, it matters to us with grant partnerships. So in short, right now, you had three schools last year currently, this year are assigned a D letter grade. If you don't think that matters and you don't think that school adjustment enrollment matters, I can tell you, people like myself and others look to see very quickly what the letter grade of the school is. And if you don't think that happens, go to Realtor.com, look at great schools, bam, your letter grade is right there. And parents can make a decision without ever talking to you or talking to us in terms of what those scores look like. So that's where it was at the end of last year. But please be mindful, and this is like on delay. There you go. So this year, notice the plus minus. So we've been very aggressive, very assertive, at least since I've arrived, with an excellent team of principals, excellent team of teachers and other staff, that we believe, right now, we think, we think we can get two of those three schools out of low performing by the end of June. That's very aggressive. But notice, plus three, plus two, basically you had five schools last year within four points or five points from the bubble mark of the cut score line. Meaning that if, I don't know, 10, maybe 15 more kids had a good day on test day, you wouldn't have had three Ds. You would actually have six Cs. So the key part about it is, the entire school year around what you find and what those initiatives and what those interventions are and all those materials, really comes down to one good week in a testing classroom. And whether you believe that's fair or not, that's our reality. And so your state legislators right now are looking at that 80, 20% of proficiency versus growth. There are some lobbyists right now saying, let's go 50/50. But at the end of the day, your local school system is not in control, not in control of the business decisions around how we're going to calculate school achievement. We just lived through that. But wouldn't it be awesome if you had five Bs? Wouldn't it be awesome if you had six Cs, knowing everyone was moving up? That looks like a school system that's moving, and that's what people want to see. And through your investment, we believe we can do that. But let me go back to 100%. Only 10 school systems in the state of North Carolina last year, I think it was 10, I don't want to quote it exactly, but just about 10 school systems in the state of North Carolina last year had 100% of their schools meet or exceed growth, which means children are learning. Doesn't mean all of them went from a D to a C. Some of them stayed at a D but met growth, meaning they're on the right track. So considering, wouldn't it be awesome, can't you envision it, that 100% of our schools in Beaufort County actually meet or exceed growth? Can you imagine that marketing scheme behind that? Can you see that across the state? Can you see it regionally and even nationally? When that happens, people from all, all over the country start calling your principals here as to how they made that happen. And well, it starts with your type of funding. So I stood before you a few months ago as the new guy, and I'm still the new guy, just not so much the new guy, but traditional versus zero-based budgeting. I stood in front of you and said, I'm not going to walk in and ask you for a 2% or a 3% every single year. That's traditional ways of doing business. And traditional ways of doing business in education means that we just come in, we ask for a percentage, but we really don't look at the detail or the ROI, the return on investment. So I'm actually asking us to come in with our Board of Education to do zero-based budgeting. And as Willie Mack is going to say at the end of this presentation, man, for sure, we have looked at every single line. We have turned it over upside down, we've had directors inside out, we're looking at whether the programs actually had productivity and desired outcome achievements. Everybody's on point with a greater expectation around zero-based budgeting. So as you start looking at these numbers, please know that this is truth. This is not a wish list, certainly not. This is truth of absolute need. So this is a list that you saw a few months ago, didn't change anything on it, these are our focus areas in terms of how state-level decisions occur. For example, the state is looking at really giving teachers a pay raise this year, and man, for sure, teachers deserve it. However, when you have such, you know, increases in salary and benefits, that's going to impact us also. So sometimes, when you can cheer on one entity, it really hurts another, and we want our teachers to have what the state wants them to have. But also, notice point four, we really look at our fund balance and how our counties have used that the last four years, and how we're working towards zero-based budgeting. I think we're being highly intentional. Also, mental health and wellness, as we talked about a few months ago, we have children coming out of that pre-K, as Mr. Singleton alluded to and Mr. Smith alluded to. Sure, children are coming to us at age four now with so many problems that you and I just may or may not have encountered, but they are far more identified than they've ever been. We have kids that absolutely have greater needs of just circumstances that you and I close our eyes and we wish we could fix it for them almost overnight. But considering that, we need investments around that. Now, the good part about it for Beaufort County is we did receive a five-year grant. We're one of three school districts in the state of North Carolina, including Stanley County and I believe Cleveland County. But specifically, we'll be working with some of our coordinators to provide professional development to our educators to work with some of those dilemmas that our kids are having right now. And so that's another part of it. But also the equity that you alluded to in terms of how many students are in a classroom, well, do we have access for our students to all courses, but also all funding streams? It's the year right now where we have employee contract decisions. May is a very unnerving time of year for many employees, all the way from administrators to school nurses to transportation, to school nutrition. However, it's uncertainty for them because we just don't know our funding streams. And then when you get down to the bottom, which probably should have been number one, safety and security, always want to provide the best environments, class size reduction, sometimes unfunded mandates are really going to create some issues for us, but considering that, we also want to make sure that we're marketing Beaufort County schools every day. So in the short term, what's really the goal? Like, why do we all show up to work every day? You know, really think through this. As accounting commissioner and as a board of education, how do you know that, you know, we're really providing the best quality education? Well, over the next three years, we were like 100% of our schools in the district, minus early college because they're already there, to have a, an increase in our current school grade and still actually meet or exceed growth in three years. What that tells constituents and the populations that you're working with is that Beaufort County is on the rise and you're competitive with anyone. Now, in this region, there are roughly 15 LEAs, you rank second in size, which means take away Pitt County, and then you're number one compared to everyone else in terms of your obligation, your desired outcomes, who you serve, and yes, as these gentlemen who just did the study said, you are probably having overflow coming from Pitt County now. So despite that you're looking at numbers, we really need to key in on what the programs are that will allow us to have growth over three years. All right, so here are the barriers. Just take a moment, here are the barriers. Now, I think you understand that in our entity as a school system, these aren't the only barriers. But sadly, this is what we face each and every day. So let me give you an example, the state and federal. It is, I think as families, we are very lucky that when you open up an email in December just before Christmas or just before the holiday, in your personal email, you don't get an email from the state that says, we're taking $32,705 away from you. You don't get those in your personal email. But man, for sure, we give them in our work email, and those people are already employed with us since August. And so part of the barrier that we have with state and federal changes is that you can't forecast when they're coming, down to the day, you can't forecast down to the week sometimes. And in fact, sometimes, actually the last three years, somewhere between December 21st and December 23rd, for where I used to work, we would get an email that would say, you've lost $14,000 in Title II funding, you've lost $30,000 in title funding. My point being is this, we sometimes struggle as Beaufort County schools and as an entity that other people make decisions on our money and our fiscal income when we have people already in place for the year. And so we need your support, and that's why I'm asking for that joint education committee, so we can really talk throughout the year around what are these changes, how they're impacting us and what that looks like. And in reality, I think Willie Mack can tell you, we receive emails that will say budget revision number one, and by the end of the year, it will say budget revision 121. So we constantly get revisions to and from. The increase in benefit costs are just a barrier that we're forever going to have to face. You want your employees to have these opportunities, but we need support from you from the local sense to help us move forward with that. And of course, changes in utility and fuel costs. I mean, for example, if you, if you did that real ed study and you followed suit to closing those schools on the south side, how much money are you going to pay in fuel costs for kids on the bus for two hours in one direction? And he started his presentation by saying air quality. All right, so considering, all right, so a little bit humor, but the key part about it is, I mean, really, would you sit on a school bus for two hours not being able to use a bathroom anywhere, where do you want to put the rest area in, from the southeast side of Snowden all the way to the west side of Chaco Linity? Where am I putting when the rest stop? I mean, that is real. That is real. And I've been on school buses that have traveled for an hour and 45 minutes as the superintendent and watched kids go to the bathroom, watched kids throw up, I mean, that's real stuff. So you've got to look past digits and numbers sometimes. All right, so in our current model of funding, ideal and the truth, and in the current model of funding, we need help. Just quite simply, we need help. But in short, if we can't get the type of help that we're seeking, whether it's local, state, or federal, these are decisions that I would have to make to recommend to the board. So you would have real world, real people, real family impacts. And these impacts would include, but not limited to, 15 teacher positions. Meaning, I would close them based off of retirement, I would close them based off of their credentials, I would close them based off of how I could move them. We try to save people, you don't want to destroy their lives, but at the same time, you don't want to put your school system into a fiscal position that you can't survive. Also, eight-time limited personnel positions, we would not invite back. So I'm sure you've heard it before, but if not, it's new to you. So did you know that there are a certain amount of art police every single year, every January, right after Christmas, coming back from that holiday, receive a letter from us that says, thank you for your employment, we're not going to have you back at the end of June? And then from January to August, they stress. Now, I certainly wouldn't want to live under that condition, but they do sign up for time limited positions, which sometimes are grant-funded or local-funded or state-funded, but we have people in this scenario. Now, when you look at that, realize you have 23 potential high-quality people. Again, going back Again, going back to that scenario of what type of education would you want for your children? These would be 23 people that would ultimately be displaced. Or 23 positions I could not put high-quality people into. And I just want to show you that these are real numbers, real impacts. So your ABM projection, the Real Ed study said 6,352. State of North Carolina sent me a sheet that says your actual is 6,501. And so I'm going to go with my sheet and with that say, 100% of 6,501 is 6,501. And so when we ask about funding, we're really asking for that partnership of how do we help every child, but please don't forget, how do we help all of our adults inside our school system? Because a lot of times, our adults are forgotten. So Willie Mack's going to stand up here in a few minutes, and I'll stand next to him to answer questions. But insured, our local request is just over 17 million. And sure, it's a shock value, but let me explain this to you and tell you why. So really, we're asking for that 2 million increase. And let me explain it to him. Previous ways of doing finance in this school system was our finance department was to essentially use lat salaries, let's say, savings from jobs or initiatives that didn't cost as much. And we would funnel that money back into debt that would ultimately clear. And so what I, being a new guy, under zero-based budgeting, I asked Willie Mack and Tammy Lewis to flip the model of how we do our funding to really show exactly what all the needs are, exactly where all the holes are, so we could do zero-based budgeting and, in short, determine what programs have to stay, what programs have to go, and so on and so forth. So considering this, in fiscal year 19, we're right at around 15 million. Now, please don't do the math straight down the page, because what you're not seeing there are fines and forfeitures and some other things in the middle that fills in that gap. Now, when you look at your capital, there we go. When you look at your capital, I wanted to be thoughtful, and I didn't want to walk in the room and say, "Dear goodness, you have a $15 million need," without saying to you, "Well, let's break it down and really look at what that means." So in short, if you took out the modular replacements, which our board has clearly made some faults around, do we want mobiles or just brick and mortar? Well, if you take out your modular replacements, then you're now around 8 million and some change. But you know what? It may be really unfortunate at one point, but just really unrealistic to walk in and say, "Can I have $8 million?" So in terms of this board, the Board of Education being very thoughtful, they said, "Let's go back and prioritize exactly what we need right now." And I thought that was very responsible in their part. And right now, exactly what I need right now is 1.2 million. And you're going to get a chance to see this list coming around. But what I asked the Board of Education to do was to show you the truth. So you're about to get a packet and a list of every item on that walkthrough, A to Z, on the walkthrough around the capital outlay. This is the truth. Now, what I mean by that is, it's not annotated. Nobody cut anything off and said, "Hey, you guys just look at the first quarter of it." In the past, our Board of Education would typically look at the entire list, make cuts to it, then present it to you, and then come back and make cuts again. I mean, this is everything. So in short, this is all chapters of the book, even the footnotes, even the references. It's everything. And it's not been, how do I say, manipulated in a way that says one is versus the other, but in short, we're looking for that type of priority and that type of help. So you're really looking at Beaufort County schools around an annual budget of $74,600. And that seems like just an awful lot of money. And it is. However, when I was in Chicago Public Schools, my budget just on the far south side was $250 million. And so in reality, it's where you've been, what you're accustomed to, what it looks like. But here in Beaufort, we really rely on our local funding as much as our state and federal funding. And so in short, Willie Mack's going to come up and speak with you about a few things. But I just want to revisit, I think it's really important that we have a partnership and that we have a vision together, and that not only can our Board of Education speak on it, but you can speak on it. We want you to come into our schools. We want you to be a part of the schools. I mean, I was so excited, you were so excited about the Golden Leaf Grant. I was so excited that many of you called me about it. And so it's been great to sit down with some of you and learn from you. But I think if we can look at a quarterly Joint Education Steering Committee to understand the impacts of change while they're happening, I think you can go in a positive way. But here's just the last part, and then Willie Mack, you can come up here. On payday, 100% of all employees expect 100% of their pay. And we're not one of those school systems that has to hold their breath, and there's some that do. And on project day, we want 100% of our kids to have 100% of their needs. And on assessment day, we want 100% of our kids to give 100% of their best, so we can truly be evaluated at 100%. And what's interesting is, you often hear our coaches in athletics say to the children, "Get out there and give it at 100%." So that matters. That absolutely matters. And so just in your life and just in where we are right now, I want to make sure that we, as a partnership, really look at what that number means to us. And I'm going to ask you to consider funding us at 100%. Thank you very much. Willie Mack?
Ms. Duke is going to be passing out basically a one-page summary of our current local expense budget, as well as the capital projects list that Mr. Cheeseman referenced. The items on the front that are listed in yellow, those are the items that the board chose to be priorities for the upcoming year. That would equal the $2.2 million that he spoke of earlier. As Mr. Cheeseman's presentation referenced, the overall recommended budget for the Beaufort County Schools for the 2020 year is $17,544,155. As he mentioned, $12,000 of that is based on earnings and investments. $50,000 is miscellaneous revenues, which would be the refund of the local sales tax that we're fortunate to get back and can reuse within the current year. That's with a fines and forfeitures estimate of $315,000, which leads us to a balance of a requested appropriation from the county of $17,167,155. If we look at what we are currently funded in our county appropriations from Beaufort County Commissioners, it's $15,157,502, which brings us to the difference, again, that Mr. Cheeseman referenced, that was $2.9 million. If you look down below in the next section of the handout that has been passed out to you all, I wanted to give you a couple of the summaries of those items and how we came to that $2 million. As Mr. Cheeseman referenced, in the past, we've used or budgeted based off of operational cost, projected cost increases for the upcoming year when we make our budget presentations to the county. 80% to 88% of our budget, certainly state, is personnel. We have personnel contracts. We are an obligation to pay those contracts. So we have, every full-time employee with Beaufort County Schools has been accounted for in this budget. Their fringe benefits, their health insurance have all been calculated to come up with an estimated cost for the upcoming year. So if you look at the first item of personnel changes, again, you have the zero-based position budgeting. You have an estimated raise of 3%. You have increases in retirement and health insurance costs, and then some shifting within the personnel to maximize dollar and position allotments from the state for efficiency purposes. For most of you all, this budget, when we worked, or I worked with the county, your full-time employees were basically your full-time employees. You had a dollar amount set for that position that you worked within. It's not that way for the school system. Ours are based on the license and credentials of most of our certified employees. So I may have budgeted for an A5 teacher. We may fill it with a master's teacher. That can be $3,000, $6,000, $8,000, depending on what the new pay tables the state comes in for the upcoming school year. That difference, we have to shuffle around to try to maximize the months of employment, the positions of employment, to put the cheapest or the lowest-paid employees we have in those dollar allotments. It is a shell game. We play it every month. As Mr. Cheeseman says, we get allotment changes every day. One of the things that we found in the current year is the federal allotments. We had budgeted or estimated on the planned budget that we were told we would get. We did not receive that funding until October. We had to use our local funding to help cover those costs, to pay those employees for what time worked. So in doing so, we ended up having to move late in the year those higher-dollar teachers around to get them into those position allotments, to try to save money on the local side for dollars to meet the other employees' needs. The next item you're going to have is charter schools. For every dollar Beaufort County Government gives Beaufort County Schools, about 6.21% of that, or six, excuse me, 6 cent goes to a charter school. So if you look at this increase that we're asking for, we would be sending an additional $125,000 to charter schools that we currently have, based on fiscal year 18 data. We have approximately 54, you may call them departments, or you may call them, we call them PRCs, based on the activities within the local government, or excuse me, the local school system's budget, that has not had increases. This $62,000 gives us about a $3,000 increase for each of those departments for supplies and materials. We have, in the past, held them on their current expenditures from prior year when we've done budgeting. Projective fuel costs, Mr. Lynn told us that his fuel had gone up about 30 cents per gallon. We are estimating about a $378,000 increase in fuel costs if the current trend holds for the upcoming school year. The other item that you're going to see is about $480,731. Again, the allotments that we receive from the state and federal government come in three categories. They come in a dollar allotment, they come in a position allotment, and they come in months of employment. We have based our budget that we're presenting to you today on a 3% raise for those that are in a position and months of employment allotment. But those that are not in those and are in a dollar allotment, we have budgeted the raise, but we did not anticipate an increase in those revenues from state. We keep hearing of ranges of percentage increases that we're seeing. There's a large or vast difference between the current budgets and budgets being presented. And as much as this budget, as Mr. Cheeseman says, is based on truth, it will all change for me when the state and federal government give us our money and we feel the vacancies that we are anticipating in the upcoming school year. And the last item is $424,000 of fund balance. In fiscal year 18, Beaufort County Schools used or appropriated about $225,000 of our fund balance. Based on our fiscal year 18 audit, we have a fund balance of about $1.46 million. With the anticipated or projected fund balance appropriation of $424,000, it will drop our fund balance at the end of the 19-year to $1,043,723. If you base it on the recommended LGC 8% fund balance, we will fall short of the fund balance appropriation. At 8%, it's $1.258 million. We're projecting it could be as low as $1,000, $1,043,000. If you have any questions, Mr. Cheeseman and I will be more than happy to answer you.
So ladies and gentlemen, in front of you, you have, I believe, two documents. One is the document that Mr. Kretman went through. The other in front of you is the work of diligence through Stan Hudson, his teammates, the principals, a lot of us here at Central Office. I want to thank Ms. Duke to also prioritize that list and putting it in good order for your reading. What you see as highlighted in yellow should ultimately total around $1.2 million of priority. That line item list means something to different people in different places, meaning at our schools and across the district. And one thing that I've talked with our Board of Education about is, yes, making site-based decisions, but also making those decisions regarding the healthiness of the entire district in totality. So although we may look at an individual school site and have to make hard decisions around that capital outlay need, you're ultimately putting that against or comparing it to the totality of the entire school district and its health. So in consideration, we are asking you for an increase this year. We are asking you to be a partner in this. And at this time, we would ask that you have questions we'd love to answer those. Chairman Rafferty, would you have to say anything, add to it?
Well, I'm sure you need time to kind of chew on these numbers and look at what they mean. As a board, we normally, since I've been on the board, we have to go through this and sometimes modify this priority less many times, because what is current today, when a roof starts leaking tomorrow, everything changes.
Yes, ma'am.
And in eastern North Carolina, I don't know about you, but we've had an awful lot of rain. And we're not even at June yet. So the numbers you see are what we've come up with, but they do have the ability, and I am pretty sure they will change. We will have things that'll come up at some of our buildings that will shove something else that, right today, we see as a priority. But like I said, a leaking roof in one of Mr. Anderson's classrooms will take a priority over us doing something else at his school. So bear that in mind. It doesn't erase the priority that we've got here today. That's still a need that these principals have expressed to us. But we do often, and we have come to you, I know many times, and said about the chillers, which are notorious for going down. But I would ask you to look at it and ask any questions. And do my board members have any questions or comments?
Jerry.
Yes. Yes, yes, Jack.
You've chucked on the local budget, the increase that you're asking for. You're comparing 18 and 19 numbers to 20 numbers. Can you give me what that looks like with federal dollars and the state, a comparison?
You mean in terms of what we're going to go from that?
Yeah, I realize the state is big, but you're asking us for a 15.2% increase.
Well, yeah.
What I would like to see, the numbers, is the total federal dollars
Sure.
and the total state dollars
Sure.
compare for the same time here. I realize that you don't know what they're going to do, but
Well, there you go.
I'm sure you've got an estimate.
Well, any estimate might be my error in actually weighing in on that right now, as we don't have our state planning allotments yet, and our federal application is due on June 30th, but I'm certain that Willie Mack might be able to put something to send to you.
Now, I'd also like to see those numbers, those three numbers, for five years ago.
Sure.
And the enrollment, five years ago, and the enrollment today
Sure.
and the projected.
Sure.
With the total dollars of all three sources, what that looks like on the first unit basis.
We can do that, Karen.
No, I'm not looking for five years, numbers for five years.
Right.
Just want to see them from five years ago versus what we're looking at for 2000.
Right. And Commissioner, I would also like to add to that, in whatever we give to you, I'd like you to consider, as you're looking at those numbers, the critical needs of our students and our staff when you look at numbers. Because when you see those numbers, you don't see the storylines of what children are now coming to school with and what those needs look like. So when you look at number to number and you're shopping in two or three different places, it's not like going to the car lot looking for the best deal. In reality, I'm serving different kids today than I served last week, which was different than the previous week. And so I ask that you have consideration to that. So as we give that information to you, please understand that when reading between the lines, there's an awful lot that we need to really look at in terms of where our students are now and where their families are now, especially after a hurricane.
The other question is, the amount of money that goes to the charter schools
Oh, yes.
from the locals.
Yes.
Is that also including the school in general? Is that also including the school in Jamesville, the northeast, by that?
Yes, sir.
So that's in there under charter schools.
Yes, sir. They receive a portion of our local county dollars, and they also pay a sizable portion of our state local money.
So we're, we're taking local tax money in Beaufort County, and we're sending it over to Jamesville in Martin County.
The money follows the child. Wherever county they live, the money follows the child.
But if, if you, if you talk to people like we've had to talk to them recently
Yes, sir.
over the last one or two years.
Yes, sir.
They say you get so many state money. There's a misconception out there.
Sure. There's a certain truth that would probably have to be marketed so everyone understands. But I'll be honest with you, with your type of funding from the county, I'm pretty confident that Beaufort County schools can rise to the point where students and their families will not want to leave us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Willie Mack, on the charter school, I see the $125,000 increase. I understand what the total number is. But can you just kind of give an estimate to the commissioners? Because that's not what we actually send to charters. That's the increase for next year. We send 800,000 plus this year.
Yes.
Yes.
So what's on top of it is about 970,000. I believe this figure comes in on 1,67,000 dollars.
I'm sorry. I was trying to write 900.
Well, that's what I wanted him to say. And I want to make sure everybody understood. It wasn't 125. It's, it was just under a million dollars is what leaves here and goes to other schools. So we don't get to split everything you give to us.
No.
That's, that's another one of those issues.
One million, 127.
It's just about every dollar we receive, a portion of that goes to charter schools.
Or to somebody.
Or to somebody.
Based on this budget of the county appropriation of
Us as being schools.
It's going to be close to one point, 1,950,000 dollars. I did not put the funding appropriations in there.
Just, just for your information, I sit down on a lot of discussions when that school was first started.
Which school is that, sir?
The one at Northeast.
Sure.
Norriston.
I know, sir. I'm understanding it. Go ahead.
And we, we were told several times at our meetings in Reeper, that that school would be funded through the NC State University, but
So will we, sir.
Through the NC State.
100%. 100% accurate in your statement, and I fully agree with you, and I'm also in agreement with you that you're disappointed to learn that it's not.
And it was going to be put at the Vernon James Center because they had capacity.
Yes, sir. And it went beyond capacity issues. But also, because of where we are with that school right now, I'm legally bound for not being able to talk to you about it in this circumstance. I'm very sorry.
I can understand.
You can't be in on that.
That you cannot talk about.
But sir, what I can tell you is, what I can tell you is, Beaufort County Schools offers every single thing of the entity of which you're talking about minus one course. And if we can partner together as the county commissioner and the Board of Education, could you imagine the education, the opportunity that we could provide children and the adults in this community, and then all of us standing on stage, regionally, statewide, nationally, to talk about how our two entities came together to say, we do not need these charter schools. We do not need the school that we speak of. And we can be just ourselves as Beaufort County. And from that, what you see here, and you mentioned the 13.1, sure, it's a shock value. But at the same time, it's truth. Meaning, I gave you the whole list, the whole list. We didn't cut anything off of it. The whole story. Just like you look at a child and say, tell me the whole story. You have the whole story. And from that, what I want to say to you is, I stand here with incredible optimism. I mean, Beaufort County Schools is so attractive. The community is amazing. But we can still do more. And so that school that you speak of, that I cannot speak of, sir, and will not speak of, because they are no different than us, and they're not even like us. We are far better.
Commissioner Moore, the 17 million, 346,450 appropriation, combined with the fines and forfeitures, which are also tied to receive 315,000, pretty the grand total of funds that are subject to charter school disbursement, comes to 17 million, 661,405 dollars. The 6.21 percent of that comes to 1,96,775,000. So the monies that we receive, we come back and go to them. And our operational costs remain the same.
And Willie Mack, doesn't that also include the monies funded for the SROs?
Yeah, anytime we receive family dollars, they are subject to disbursement.
But they're not bound. They just receive the money. So when they get the portion of the money that you give to us so that we can hire the SROs, which we've done, they get a portion of that money. Yet they're not bound to hire SROs.
That's not because it comes through our system?
Right. Comes through our system, and therefore, we must give them that same percentage. So it's, doesn't, to me, it just doesn't seem like a fair playing field. If they're getting a percentage of the money that you're giving us for SROs, and those are strictly SRO salaries. That's all we can do with it. But yet, they still get a percentage of that not to hire SROs. They can do with whatever they want to with it. They're not bound to that agreement.
I have one more question, and maybe you can, you can answer this
Sure.
even though you're involved in lawsuits.
I can't tell you I'm involved in lawsuits.
Or mass.
You can, you can direct it to me.
The comment, the comment that I understand, or that I hear
Sure.
is that 75% of the courses that are taught at that school in Jamesville are done online.
So, sir?
And you don't need, you don't need a brick and mortar building, and you don't need a local feature to do that.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to invest in your local teachers here in Beaufort County Schools, because you'd rather have students face-to-face with high-quality educators, even if they have an online program, in order to gain a great understanding of the skill sets that our business community needs. And the other flip of what you just said to me is, you're watching your local dollars travel out of your county in order for another county to benefit, and they're smiling at you. Sure. So what I'm really asking you to do as a county is be our partner. Let's do this together. Constantly question how we're using the money in a quarterly session around the Joint Steering Education Committee. Let us tell you when you're winning. Let us tell you when you're losing. And let's just knock this out together. I mean, can you imagine people coming to Beaufort County's, Beaufort County to be a part of Beaufort County Schools because they heard about you from the mountains and they wanted to be here? I can imagine it. I've seen it. So let's do it together. And if you don't want to talk about that school anymore, invest in us. Because I'm done talking about that school.
I would rather for those kids to go to Emory's class.
Well, let's call that the Early College High School. And I'll say that to you, since you mentioned Principal Tate, amazing, amazing leader. Now you tell me across the county line, show me the amazing leader in that other school. You're not going to see it. So considering, what I'm telling you right now, is if you invest in Beaufort County Schools to the entity of what we are requesting, we will get results within three years that all of you can be proud of. And I will stand anywhere on the platform and show every one of you who's actually doing the work. And it's the teachers, the TAs, the bus drivers, the custodians, the nurses, the principals, the APs, your coaches on the ball field, this Board of Education. We're just ready. Let's do it.
And on that, Frankie, I want to add, and I applaud Ms. Peck's accomplishments. She ranks right up there at 98, 99 percentile. But our other high schools as well, I sat through all of the graduations last year. I sat through all of their award ceremonies. There were millions, not hundreds of thousands. There were millions of dollars that was given out in scholarships to our students in Beaufort County Schools from every high school, including Early College. And these were for kids that had taken online classes here through Beaufort Community College. They were going in as a sophomore to some of their universities, not as a freshman. They were going, they were going to a university anywhere from 18. One kid went with 42 credits, 42 credits from Washington High Schools. How many that, that student took with her when she went to a university and paid zero dollars for those credits?
Yeah.
She got them all online. And so I challenge anybody to, to come and tell us that, that we're not doing a good job. We're doing a great job.
And the other part of that is, you have students who have done exceptional. Show me the alternative learning program at the school that you speak of. We have students that go to an alternative learning program here that would otherwise drop out, be a problem in your streets, and are connected to teachers at that school that they need, they love, and they have lifetime commitments. The school that you speak of does not have an alternative learning program like we have. So when we look at the east of this county, the west of this county, the north of the county, and the south of the county, we're sure you have a river divide. But there's no reason to be divided here. If we partner, we can have the totality of amazing, of which whatever school we put us up against, any LA, I would stand in front of anyone and say, you have the best people here. And so, to be quite honest with you, that's what attracted me to apply for the job. It's the people that are already here. And so your investment in us is a reflection to those people that they should stay here because you're committed. And three years, three years, you would see incredible return on your investment. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
The chairman.
The chairman.
See, as far, back to the SROs, my question is, at what point do you, the county commissioners release their funds to the SRO? Does this at the time, at one fund, do you do it at one time, or do you do it as the SRO go, or aside?
Do you mind that?
So just a little bit of clarification on SROs. The county hires and pays for the SROs, not the Board of Education. We do do an exchange of funding.
Yes, identical.
Where I write you a check, and you turn around and give it back to me. But, but the sheriff's office, they hire the SROs and the county funds to us.
Don't we have to give a portion of that, Willie Mack?
If you have, if you have, we're paying you back because it's under your appropriations of the SROs.
Well, we can certainly talk about fixing that and changing the way that we're doing that exchange there.
I'm grateful.
Yes, that'd be wonderful. Once it comes in, they get a, they get a cut?
Six cents.
Yeah.
6.21%.
Okay. Thank you for opening that door. That'd be fantastic.
Can I ask a question around that too, just for clarity, because something's come up to me and I didn't have the answer. So just using last year's figures, and if I'm off a few, don't, don't hold me to it, $765,000 is, is, and even though I know, I understand that you, the county, pays the sheriff's department, I just know it just flows through us. I call it a pass-through. I mean, I understand that.
Exactly.
But it was included, the 765,000, as part of our overall appropriation amount, total appropriation amount. So beginning, it's, it's not quite as much now, but let's go back to last year, let's go back to private Christmas. So if you take the 765,000 and you pass through a ninth of it at the time, because I believe it's over a nine-month period, is that right?
Twelve months.
Okay, 12 months. So you, you pass through a 12th of it, 12 into 765. You pass it through to this department, they pass it back to you. Okay. But at that point, even though it was included in our budget, which looks to me like, well, every time somebody says, how much does the county give us, they look at what the appropriation is. So it's in that figure. But we're passing 100% of that 765 to you. But you're not paying 160, I mean, 70, 100% back to the sheriff's department because they didn't hire the SROs. We had, we still, as of today, do not have SROs in all our schools. So the 765,000 that was, I'm, I'm not going to say charged to us, but allotted to us as part of the budget money, how come we send it all back to you if you're not sending it all to the sheriff's department for, why did we not send back just a part to pay for them?
100% of that was budgeted in the sheriff's office. I mean, come July 1, we budgeted 100% of the positions with the benefits, just like you would.
So you pay them 100%, even though they haven't hired any SROs, but we're supposed to have 14?
14 is they have all of them except one. I think that's one.
Oh, they don't have any CPS, and we still share everyone at Bath and Boys.
Yeah, Charlie knows we have to pay Charlie for some.
I mean, I'm just saying, but you understand what I'm saying. We had 76.
It's a service that's being brought in by sheriff's office. It makes buildings flow back and run everything up. That's what we do.
I'm sure.
We correct that, but it's a service that's grateful about it. He's kind of, he's kind of played both sides of it.
I'm not saying that. It wasn't the HCS. It wasn't the teachers or the sheriff's office. No, I'm saying they haven't given us all our SROs.
And they, and apparently, they've been paid for.
Okay.
So you're saying the sheriff's department?
This isn't a fight between, this isn't a fight between anybody. I'm just asking
a question. They're supposed to be paid for SROs. Why don't we have SROs?
Yeah.
And, and just for the record, there have been people within the sheriff's department that we have asked these questions to, that have come forward and answered these questions. So I'm not, I'm not coming to you, Brian. I've, that has been a presentation, I mean, that has been a question that's been proposed to the sheriff, and I haven't seen him standing up here and answer that question.
Well, it was because of him coming to the commissioner.
Well, it wasn't because he was over here.
I was just wanting to find out, you know, why we had SROs, we had SROs and not there.
And Commissioner Richardson, for the, for the record, they have an open invitation to come.
Anytime.
Anytime.
The door has no lock, dude.
But.
The door has no lock.
We're treated the same.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for participating. I want to thank our principals and assistant principals and, and directors for coming today. I know you have a busy day and a busy time, but we wanted you to be part of this discussion so that you have some idea, you know, how we put together the budget and how we collaborate with our county commissioners.
Pass the board to stand.
Yes, and I do need our board to stay here for a few minutes. Is there, are there any other questions or comments, Chairman Evans, from, from your side?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Since we were all talking about the resource officer and the sheriff's involvement and the possibility of, based on the events being a mass shooting, I was wondering, was there any study done to harden the doors in any of the schools? I didn't see it on the sheets.
Hardening doors.
The hardening of the doors.
Is everybody good to be closed or something?
We've already, they're all locked. Last one door's locked.
Are they, are they locked in one place?
Yes, sir. Remote locks.
In every school?
Yes, sir. All of our schools.
Okay, that's very good.
We did it last year.
Has there been thought to being able to have an ancillary means of locking interior doors?
Interior doors must be locked.
Yeah, they're, it's called a classroom lock function. So if they close the door, it's locked.
It's locked.
Yes, sir. And it takes a key to get in the door. You can't, it's locked.
The outside of it.
Yes.
Okay, good.
But we do have issue with some of our schools having detached buildings and kids having to transfer. So we do have open doors because we have to have them transfer from building to building.
I had to come here to that with getting that information. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll, we'll take a quick break.
Yes, sir. Thank you.